What made me specifically interested in running is we had an issue during the middle of COVID where the mayor and the city manager proposed a thirteen percent tax increase. And I thought that was going to hurt the people who had fixed income, the business owners, and people who'd lost their jobs during COVID. It was a very difficult time. They also had a thirty-five percent reserve, which is one of the largest in the state. And the swing vote, interestingly enough, was the student who's on council. And so he cast a very brave vote against the city manager, against the mayor, who's a current candidate, for a compromise which was a seven percent force or four cents increase on the property tax. And that convinced me that one vote on city council matters. I want to be somebody who can be that one vote, or who can build coalitions to get good things done, or build a coalition of three people that can prevent bad things from happening. And that was really motivation. Interestingly enough, it came from a William and Mary student. So I was really proud to get the endorsement from our community, our Williamsburg student group, that formed really out of the issues that are particularly important to students in this election. The first is the relationship between off-campus students and the residents who live in the neighborhoods near the campus. I lived off-campus as a student and really enjoyed that experience and got to meet many people who are residents, some of whom are still friends today. And so as you've had increased enforcement and made it more and more difficult to have a good time celebrating on campus, that's pushed a few party houses into the neighborhoods. And it's not really fair to the students that they can't have safe parties on campus. It's not that the students don't belong. We very much want students to be in our neighborhoods and in our community. And like I said, that's how I lived as a student. The other issue is parking. And the college has said freshmen and sophomores can't have cars. Of course, freshmen and sophomores have cars. And I think it's been problematic for the college to say that those can't be on campus, but not to provide a place for them. So I think the two issues that are important to campus students are this relationship improving dramatically and quickly between the residents who, students who just don't, in some cases, even feel welcome in the neighborhoods, and the issue of someplace to put cars. How do we, as city council, have an impact on the college administration decisions? It needs to have multiple layers. Because I worked for William and Mary, because I was associate dean at the law school, and because I've been involved as an alumnus ever since I graduated, I have deep relationships with some of the vice presidents and leaders at the college. But it's having honest conversations at that level about how we make a difference. We just need to figure out how to improve on, particularly in these two areas I've identified. Since I graduated, I've been very involved in the effort to make sure that our student athletes are protected. So it shaped me because I was a finance major in the business school, which is the business that I'm in now, which is helping people to retire successfully, providing financial planning and wealth management. I was hired by a William and Mary alum, Jim Brinkley, who was one of the founders of Legg Mason. So I was hired at a William and Mary firm. So it's, I think it shaped me deeply, my experience on campus, being an activist, if you will, involved in community affairs, but also my professional life. So the question is surrounding the three- and four-person rule, and would we lift the current moratorium on the four-person rule? And just the question alone demonstrates how convoluted the solution is. The three-person rule is the minimum allowed by state. There are many houses that can easily accommodate more than three students, and many that have as many as eight bedrooms. So there was a compromise that was created by our current mayor to have a four-person rule. And then recently, city council voted not to allow any more three-person rental homes to apply to be four-person homes, and therefore the moratorium on the four-person rule. I think the challenge with the three- and four-person rule is that it doesn't work because all of us know there's more than three and even four people living in the homes. So the solutions that we've come up with so far simply don't work. I've heard of landlords using the three- and four-person rule against students by saying, "You know you have more people than you're supposed to, and therefore I'm not going to do required maintenance or requested maintenance on a home." So I don't think the three-person rule is effective, and I don't think it's fair. I don't yet have a better solution. I've been working on this all summer in consultation with the college, with the police department, with our planning department, with students and with residents, and many landlords. So I've talked to all of those, and I don't yet have a solution for it. So I don't think it makes sense to raise the limit on the four-person until we get a better solution. We have some time, but we need to figure out a solution that's going to work for the students and be fair to the students, and is going to protect the important neighborhood characteristics of our neighbors that are right near to the college campus. I think there's a lot of opportunities for students to be involved in city government. I think that we've had now three members of the student body who've been elected to city council. But that's, I think it's been a very positive involvement, and each of them have distinguished themselves really well. So I'm in favor of having students engaged in these either appointed or elected positions in student, in the city government. We've also had people who've interned in various departments, in the economic development office, the commissioners' office, and others. So I think there's a lot of opportunity for students to learn. But whether you stay in Williamsburg or not, I think it's wonderful that the students are getting practical, real experience in how local government works, and I think we benefit from their experience. We have over two hundred students who are serving as mentors in the classroom every week during the school year. We have the fraternities and the sororities and some of the athletic teams contributing. I think it's over thousands of hours each year in the local community. And the wonderful thing about that is that side-by-side, usually residents working directly with students. So I think there's a lot that the students are already engaged in. There's still a red brick wall between the college and the town. And so I think there's an opportunity for the students to invite the community into the college campus. And I think we just need to continue to build on that. But I would say students are involved. I think we welcome that student involvement. And I think the community has greatly benefited from it. I mean, we have to acknowledge that William and Mary is one of the two major crown jewels in our community. So I think the students have a lot of opportunity to be involved, and even to be involved at the highest level on city council in deciding and implementing policy. So I think there needs to be both formal and informal communication, right? We want to have students who sit on boards and who provide advice to all levels of city government. I'd also like to see a liaison from the student government directly to city council so that we can hear what that, what the issues are that are really important to the students, and you can have a voice. And I think it would be wonderful if we had a designated representative from campus who would be sort of the voice of the students in that formal way. But it also requires a lot of informal discussion. So I enjoy being on campus. I think that informal discussion and level of familiarity is also important, that students can be honest in a sort of one-on-one way about their concerns. And so I've tried to be accessible to the students, and I think that's important for all the members of city council. Some of us have more ties to the college than others, and I think that's one of the things the students want to consider and have considered in who they're supporting for city council. Yeah, I think the most pressing challenge for the current students is that the college is failing to provide enough housing. So we were all surprised when somewhere between two hundred and six hundred students will not have housing next year because of tearing down dorms and because of renovation of dorms. But William and Mary is a residential school, and that's one of its great strengths. So I think council needs to push back and work with the college and say it's the college's responsibility to provide on-campus, safe, affordable housing for eighty percent of the students. That's always been the mandate. And if they're going to increase enrollment, then that means increasing the number of rooms. So in the short term, there's nothing that the city council can do to create two hundred rooms near campus for students. In fact, as we've brought Midtown Row and High Street and other places online and created more student housing near to campus, unfortunately, it seems like the college has just taken away housing, so we haven't had a net gain. That, to me, is the most pressing issue. And the only thing that we can do is work with the students to push back on the college to make sure that the college understands it's their responsibility to provide housing for the majority of students on campus. And I think before it's too late, we need to reverse some of the decisions that have been laid out in the ten-year plan so that there's always enough housing for the students who want to live on campus. The community is strong. We have plenty of resources to address things like affordable housing and transportation dignity. They're not really part of this, but are on my website if people want to look at www.rickforwilliamsburg.com. The most pressing issue is to stand with the students and make sure that they have safe, affordable housing. Yeah, we touched on mainly issues that are relevant to students, but there's other issues that are important in our community. One is affordable housing. We have a model of taking motels that are really not serving as motels. They're really homeless shelters, quite frankly, and we're not treating those people with dignity. And so we have a model where we can convert those to affordable apartments in the same building. The problem is there's a cap of two hundred units. But last week, council voted to delay increasing that limit up to three hundred and fifty or five hundred units. So I want to make sure we don't have delay after we've studied and studied and studied something that we can actually get it done. I was very disappointed that council voted to delay that last week. And the second one we need is we need transportation solution. It's my view that the bus system simply doesn't work. It doesn't get people from where they are to where they want to go in a dignified way. What I'd like to try is using shared apps like Uber and Lyft. And if students or residents couldn't afford that, that eighteen dollars that we get from taxes and federal and state grants, I'd like to use that to subsidize that ride so that people are only paying about two dollars, which is what they pay on the bus now. But it takes two hours to get from one of our neighborhoods in the community, one of our poorer neighborhoods, quite frankly, Grove, to Walmart. It takes two hours and two bus rides. So I'd like to provide transportation with dignity and housing with dignity, and we have the resources to do that in this amazing community. Why should students vote for me over the other candidates? I'm trying to make my race for Williamsburg and not against anybody. I know each of the other candidates. They're friends of mine, and I can work with any of them on council. I think what's needed at this point is two things. First, somebody on council who has deep budget and finance experience, who can dig in. We have nineteen million dollars of COVID relief that's coming from the federal government to Williamsburg that we didn't ask for and don't need. But we have to decide how to spend that wisely to solve the problems that we have. And so my experience on council would be unique as somebody who's in finance and with a finance degree, who can work with the budget. The second reason I think students should vote for me is really because of my deep ties to Williamsburg. Because of my deep ties to multiple levels of the administration, and therefore the ability to have an impact, to speak for and with the students. And I think it's important that you have both the deep ties to William and Mary, but the independence to speak honestly, to try and get some of these issues that are important to students solved.
If you want to make an impact and, you know, and be a good citizen, this is part of what you do is you step forward and try to apply your skills for the common good. So that's really what's motivated me to run for city council. In my professional life, as an attorney, I have always wanted to use my skill and my training as a lawyer for the public service. I transitioned out of working for the Senate and began working at William and Mary Law School where I am now. I am now the director of the clinical programs and the director of the immigration clinic here at the law school. So I, my work is really at the intersection of teaching students, but also making sure that underserved members of our community have access to pro bono representation. I have a child who's in the fifth grade in the public school system, and I have parents who retire here and retired here. And I'm really also involved in obviously the William and Mary community as well. I really would look to the students to tell me what's the most important student issue. I mean, what I definitely hear about and what I certainly understand are concerns about student housing and the, and the pressure on students to find housing, you know, just to go to school here. That is, that is not a new issue, but it's certainly something that has really come forward from student voices in this campaign as a big concern to the student body. So certainly, I would want to work with students and listen to, listen to their perspectives, like, you know, build consensus with the full-time residents and the city and the college to make sure that student housing needs are being met, and they're being met in a, in a safe and affordable way. The second issue, aside from housing, but that I think is related, is, it's something I'm really passionate about, is thinking about public transit, about, you know, bike paths, you know, community spaces. Because really, when you think about, you know, making sure there is adequate student housing, that is, that does dovetail with the issue of, of public transportation. But I would also really want to talk to students and learn more about what other issues that they would want to bring forward. So we're talking about affordable housing with respect to the student population. At the end of the day, like William and Mary as an institution has a big responsibility for making sure that they can deliver on the promise that they make to students about having a residential campus. So thinking about what the city can really do to help students with the housing situation, I think there are a couple of things that I would do. I am, I would support lifting the moratorium on the four-person exemption to the three-person rule. I think that that's not a small number if you're one of the students that gets a room and a bed because of the lifting of that moratorium. So that does make a difference on a small scale, and I think that does matter. I would also want to work with landlords to, you know, make sure that the housing that they are putting on the market for students to rent is, is safe and, and not dilapidated. And so I think a way to do that is to, you know, in, institute the rent-ready program and to have landlords be certified by the city so that students would know that yes, this is a landlord that has submitted themselves to certification, and this is somebody who is going to take care of the property, that has like promised to take care of the property. I don't think that there's something that the city can do, like, you know, in the most immediate term, within the next year, to sort of create more housing. And so I think that we have to look at, how do we make sure that we can expand just what's here, or at least make what's here more accessible to the students? I am somebody who has, who has lived down by the college and who has valued living down by the college with students. But, you know, this idea of there are, there are frictions, and there are times where students and, you know, full-time residents may feel animosity towards each other. And I think that to repair those relationships really does take a lot of very direct communication. And I think that having like a grassroots-level conversations are really important. So I know that the city leadership and the college administration, they talk, you know, about neighbor relations kind of at a high level. But what I would want to see is honestly more conversation like within the neighborhoods. And if that means like sort of being a negotiator, being a mediator, and going between, that's fine. I mean, I'm a lawyer by training. So if that means sort of having these like, you know, really street-by-street level conversations, I would be really, really happy to lead those. We all bear that responsibility. Anybody in a community does, whether you're a full-time resident or a part-time resident as a student. We all have responsibility in this. And so I would really like to be involved in mending those relationships where there, where there is friction. So I don't think that being employed by the college like really makes difference at all. I think that that's where it really comes down to kind of being a bridge in some ways, is having the perspective of both sides, like a long-term or full-time resident, and somebody who moves into spaces with students and really does understand some of the challenges that students face. There have been multiple professors, you know, on city council over the years. So I don't know why it would be any different with me. Like I said before, like I really want to make sure that we have community spaces where everyone feels, you know, that this is something that is part of Williamsburg's identity and actually have a community identity that is independent of William and Mary and CW. I'm also very concerned and with public education. So that's something that I, I talk about a lot in my campaign, is making sure that WJCC schools and the school system have appropriate resources and advocacy. Something that students may not know is that WJCC schools are losing teachers at a very high rate to neighboring counties. And so this is something that has an impact very much to the residents of Williamsburg. So those are just some of my priorities and making sure that, you know, we're not always looking at every issue in Williamsburg through a lens of tourism, but we're also looking at it as a, through a lens of how does this help the people who live here, whether they be, like again, like full-time residents or part-time residents. And part-time residents may be students, or they may be retirees, but we want to make sure we're looking out for the people who live and work here. And I think it's really important to make sure that it's not always like on students or on, you know, even other community members to always come to city council for city council meetings or board and commission meetings. I understand, right, that if you are a student, you have class at two o'clock in the afternoon, you can't necessarily go and give a public comment, you know, if something is that you're feeling like passionate about. So something that I would really want to do, just sit in Sadler Terrace and be like, "Come tell, like, you know, Stacy, what's on your mind?" And I think that like that's a way to make sure that I'm getting, you know, feedback and, you know, comment and input from students. And by going into the spaces where students are and not relying, or not like, you know, saying that, "Well, you need to come to where I am," because that's not always feasible, not just for students, but for other constituencies as well. Students should, should vote for me for a couple of reasons. I'm a very good listener. I'm a very like open-door person. I believe in transparency. I believe in honesty. I believe in accountability. I believe in just making sure that people are heard and are understood, that they're being listened to. And not just like listened to of like, "Oh yeah, that's nice," but actually like, "I'm going to listen to what you're saying. I'm going to listen to what's behind what you're saying, and I'm going to try to address the concerns that you have in a thoughtful and strategic way." So that is something that is essential, I believe, to city leadership. I have been a successful professor and a successful lawyer because I know how to listen, to understand what somebody's trying to say, and understand what they, what are their goals, and then help them get there. I mean, that's what I do. I also think that a reason for students and really everyone to vote for me is because I would bring skills and qualities to city council that no other candidate or current council member actually has. I would be the only lawyer on city council on, on Capitol Hill. It was obviously like issues that are on a national level, but I want to apply that here at the local level. The other thing is that I am the only person who is the candidate or would be a city council member that does have a child in the public school system. And I think it's actually really important in this time and in all times to have a working parent to be on city council. In general, I think that, you know, what we don't, what I don't want to see in, in any kind of, in leadership body is a group of people that always move in the same space. I think that leadership is better when you have a, a group of people who are in different spaces, who will hear different points of view just because of where they are and their lives and in the world. I bring that different type of perspective and would make city council a more well-rounded body.
I'm running for reelection because there's still work to do, to be done. For example, I will continue to provide a voice for our community members, including students, advocate for common sense solutions, programs, and projects, support public safety, our local nonprofits, our schools, and continue to advocate for economic vitality and affordable housing across all demographic sectors, including for our William and Mary students. And first, here are my qualifications. My public service began as a paramedic firefighter and president of the Williamsburg Volunteer Fire Department while a William and Mary student. I earned my MBA from William and Mary and an MPA, Master of Public Administration, from Cal State Northridge. I have thirty-five-plus years' management experience in both the public and private sectors. And this includes leadership positions with progressive cities such as Seattle and Los Angeles. In Williamsburg, I've been a student renter for four years, a homeowner for eighteen years, with eight of those years renting to students. I understand student and neighborhood issues. With a background in project and program management, I'm able to identify problems and then suggest resources and solutions to address them. For example, last fall, do you remember the long lines at the campus post office? I brought this to the attention of the administration, who thought students were just waiting to pick up their packages. After investigating, the administration told me that there was a staff shortage and the technology piece to help the post office had not been installed yet. I offered to find volunteers to help until the open positions were filled. I also looked into where the nearest Amazon lockers were and found them to be at the right aid on the other side of Target. I talked with both William and Mary Real Estate and CW Real Estate and suggested if they wanted to increase foot traffic to their retail areas, they should provide Amazon lockers there. For more information, students can check out my webpage at www.tetforwilliamsburg.com/William-Mary or scan the QR code on my Instagram, which is TedMaslin1693. Yeah, one of the most pressing issues for students, you know, housing. Let's be clear, William and Mary must be held responsible for providing quality, affordable housing. If that is not possible, the administration should dial back enrollment. Finding out that we had a six-hundred-student waitlist last spring after those decisions were made is not acceptable. Our collective voices convinced William and Mary to keep One Tribe Place open. Midtown Row's six-hundred-and-twenty bedrooms helps us every two years. Last academic year, most of their tenants were juniors. The majority of them renewed for this year as seniors. Also, I suggested creating a portal to pair opposing semester of study abroad students who want on-campus housing. The ten-year dorm plan is long overdue, but it does not add capacity at the end of the overall project. How does that make sense when enrollment keeps growing? Add to the gap, William and Mary's increased enrollment to find the real deficit. Obviously, there are many housing options off-campus in Williamsburg, James City County, New York County. However, for students without vehicles, these options are not viable without a responsive transportation system. Demanding a student-centered bus system, as we see at competitor universities, is absolutely necessary. These solutions must come from within William and Mary. I would like to help. I will be meeting with WADA November ninth for a strategic planning session. The four-person rule. Some times ago, a previous city council developed a voluntary program whereby a landlord could rent to four individuals if the property met certain requirements. Over time, thirty-seven landlords successfully received four-person certification. Today, thirty-three of those houses are still active. Currently, there are no applications in the pipeline. At most, pausing the four-person rule for a few years might have stopped two additional bedrooms from being added to rental inventory in the past year. When you consider that I've added two student bedroom suites in this house this year, there's been no net loss in incremental student rooms. I presented to the Planning Commission infill as a way to increase bedrooms in existing neighborhoods. Concerning the comments at the Planning Commission meeting, I was the only candidate at that meeting. Some of the comments that were made targeting our planning commissioner, who, who I appointed there as a student member, were uncalled for. The chair should have shut them down immediately. The student was probably one of the smartest people in the room. You know, there's, there's some sparks there in terms of some of the neighborhoods that feel that they've been disrupted by party houses. And successful neighborhoods are known for neighbors helping each other. When newcomers move in, they meet their neighbors and often benefit from learning details of services provided by the city of Williamsburg. Many neighbors see living in a community of students as positive. They enjoy the benefits of living in a college town. For those neighborhoods where an external coach or referee is needed, I propose and adopt a neighborhood program. This would pair a neighborhood with a city council member who would meet with all relevant stakeholders and then suggest a plan for bringing the neighborhood back into harmony. Noise and parking complaints tend to be the source of problems within several neighborhoods. A community approach is needed to address them. I plan to partner with Student Assembly on several projects, including expanding the availability of Zip Cars, both on-campus and off-campus, developing a case for William and Mary Dedicated Transportation System, and help Student Assembly work with the administration to approve student housing, dining, and parking opportunities, and just as importantly, minimize the campus disruption during the construction projects. I've suggested fundraising ideas for several of our club sports teams, since most of them need to pay their own way. I offered to work with students to develop advocacy skills. Our city council and boards and commissions meetings have been lacking public comment. This would offer a great opportunity for students to research an issue and present a point of view. The two complaints from residents are parking and noise. I think many of the neighborhoods adjacent to the William and Mary are at capacity. And, and we really need to look at a transportation system that'll work for all students. And that opens up a large number of rooms out in the community. The best thing that we can do to help students is to introduce them to the community. This is one of the best communities, I think, for a college student because of the scale of it. So I think it's, it's just a matter of maybe welcoming the students and, and making sure that they understand the opportunities they have here. One of the best things that we see in the business school is the executive partners. I think we can, you know, expand that concept more into, into the community. Here are several comments I've received while serving on city council. "You are the everyday champion of ordinary citizens. You are their voice and conscience. You ask good questions and do not accept the status quo. You understand that when the city raises property taxes, my rent goes up. You were the only one to vote against raising taxes. Thank you so much for your time, guidance, endorsement, and internship ideas. I couldn't have done it without you." As you can see, I care about William and Mary. As a former student, a Williamsburg community member, and now a city council member, I can amplify student voices. I have a demonstrated track record of listening to stakeholders, suggesting solutions, and when necessary, speaking truth to power. My name is first on the ballot for Williamsburg City Council. I'm asking for the first vote. I'm asking for the first vote from William and Mary students. Thank you."
Yeah, so I decided to run for reelection. I love Williamsburg. I'm born and raised here in Williamsburg, lived next to the campus for, gosh, nearly 50 years. Williamsburg has provided my family so much, and this to me is a way to give back. Re-election means that I will be able to carry forward some of the initiatives, significant ones. The redevelopment of the visitor center site, partnering with the college to help start the data research center, continuing to work on K-12 education and making that the best that can be. It's important to have continuity of experience and leadership on city council. Pressing college student issue. For years, we hear about housing, whether that's the three-person rule or just inadequate housing, landlord issues, feeling connected to Williamsburg or, or feeling that some residents in Williamsburg don't want you here. Some of those are good issues and some of those are really not issues. In terms of housing, since 2012 when I got on council and just before that, I was chairman of the Planning Commission. We had a, a panel put together or a committee to look at, how do we expand housing for students from just being three persons in a house to four? Because so many students were living illegally in big houses. And that, I think, creates uncertainty for the student and unrest, and that's just not fair. We looked at best practices and ultimately, there was the decision of the community that we should expand to four persons in qualifying homes. As I said at the forum, the answer to additional housing is not going to come from more houses in our neighborhood. By expanding the four-person rule, even if we doubled it, it, it only provides housing for 38 people. There's, there's several large houses that are dedicated to student housings today that frankly I could see have five people. You have five people in a house, you may have five cars on the street, and those five people in the house may have five visitors, and so now you have 10 cars on the street. So the, the effect of that grows exponentially. But I think that's a conversation we can have as a community. We can't shut our minds to new opportunities and new things just, just for the sake of saying no. Let's have the conversation, be bold, be initiative and take the initiative to, to look at issues and, and try to make the best decision. One of the big changes since, since I've been in, living here and next to the college, the crackdown on parties. You know, right behind my house are the intermarrow fields and what used to be the old fraternity complex. And there were some good parties back then. That doesn't happen at the new fraternity complex, and I think there's, there's something to be said about that. And so then the cause of that is parties move into the neighborhoods, and that's where some of the tension lies. That's not to put fault on anyone that there's complaints about it, or there's a party and then there's complaints about it. I think that's just the natural element of life in terms of living in, in a college town and in neighborhoods. But at the same time, there are people that have made significant investments in their homes, that's often their largest asset, and those folks may have children going to school, jobs to get to, and so having, you know, parties next door is disruptive to them. And conversely, having somebody, if you're a student and you're having parties and you have somebody that's cracking down on you, that's disruptive to students. And so there's that tension. But I think, you know, immediately what should happen is, is to develop a good relationship with your neighbors going both ways, both from the students to the volunteer residents and, and back. But there has to be respect. Drinking on campus, I understand that that's a, really frowned upon and, and so it really diminishes the ability, I think, to have parties on campus. I don't know that there's an answer to that. There's no question that the university has a law school attached to it and they know how to live with their liability, but in that also is protecting the students and wanting to make sure that they have a safe learning environment. Williamsburg is only nine square miles. If the college in William and Mary expands, you know, 400 yards in every direction, in either direction, it'll overrun the neighborhoods. And the neighborhoods are a critical component of what makes Williamsburg, Williamsburg. And so we have to be careful to protect those neighborhoods, but in doing so, we, we need to understand and really admit to the reality that the college is growing and is bringing more students and there needs to be more student housing. And I think that the best way to address that is on campus. Now, there may be some elements and opportunities off-campus. Right across the street from my office is Richmond Hall. It's a motel that's been converted to apartments. I hear it's not the best place in town. You know, I think the university would like to see that redeveloped into a modern facility, and I think that's be a good place for additional off-campus student housing. You know, one of the things that I, that I did in Williamsburg is created in partnership with the city, of course, the Adaptive Housing Ordinance, which allowed for hotels to be converted into apartments. My, my hotel was the first hotel that took advantage of that. That's an example of expanding housing opportunities off-campus in a way that is less disruptive to neighborhoods. Midtown Row is a great example of, of providing new, modern facilities that students are looking for. 80% of the housing and dining facilities are inadequate, and, and they're right, and they know that. In order to attract the best students, they're going to have to have the best amenities. You know, one of the things that I'm very passionate about for everyone in Williamsburg is, is to create a, a sense of place that you feel welcomed. I worked hard to create the, the Williamsburg Truth and Reconciliation Committee because I wanted to put a voice and a conversation to some significant issues that I believe plagued people of color in Williamsburg for, for decades, and I wanted to make sure that they were being heard, to have the opportunity to be heard, and people to, to feel like this is a place where they can come live, work, visit, get an education and feel safe and know that, that Williamsburg cares about them. So I think students should vote for me because of my track record of being aware, being a listener, and being somebody that can bring leadership to the table to make changes happen for the positive. But that's just a small example of, of the efforts that I've put forward throughout the years to make sure that the student body, the faculty, the administration have a voice at city council. You know, they bring so much vibrancy, so much life to Williamsburg. Participating in charitable organizations, donating hours and time to make, make Williamsburg a better place. You obviously bring an economy with you, you shop in local stores. Town and gown relationship, in my estimation, is as good as I've ever seen it. Now, there are some, some outliers, but, but I think in my conversations with Student Assembly members, life is good. So I want to make sure that it continues to be.